This conference will now be recorded.
There we go. Thank you, Bill.
All right, so I'll go ahead and I'll call the May 19, 2020 Planning Commission meeting to order at 6:37 PM. And just to be prepared.
Perfect.
All right, so if we want to, you don't have to stand, but for the Pledge of Allegiance, our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to the justice hands, one nation. There we go. Every single team of justice.
Thanks for standing, Mark.
You can tell that when everybody speaks, it's going to be a little difficult. So we'll, one of the techniques that we can try to use as part of this is if there's some talking over each other, it's going to be really the Chair's responsibility to make sure that everybody gets heard and may need to call in people. We won't be, we won't be doing any voting or anything today. So we won't have to worry about a roll call like that. But you might want to, you might want to start with a roll call. All right, so I'll just go ahead and I'll, I'll name the names and you can just say present. Cause I can't see everybody currently. Commissioner Huggins?
I'm here.
Commissioner Vitiase?
Present.
Commissioner Maddox?
Present.
Commissioner Frenette?
Here.
Commissioner Freiberger?
Here.
And Commissioner Penna?
Here.
All right, so we have a full house tonight. Which brings us to the discussion about meeting protocols on these virtual meetings. In light of COVID-19 and the city closure on Planning Commission. So John, you want to go ahead and lead us into that and kind of give us a rundown of what the protocols are? Yeah, I'm going to our agenda to make sure that I'm keeping up with everybody. So because we're meeting in a virtual meeting style and we're not having a location where people can come and see the Planning Commission meeting. There's state regulations about what, what can and can't be done at a meeting that doesn't have full accessibility for people to show up. So as part of the COVID-19 proclamations, the Governor has put in place some requirements that only certain things can be talked about at meetings and those are things that are necessary and routine. So we can make an argument that just about anything is necessary. We can make an argument that just about anything is routine. Like we routinely have Planning Commission meetings, we routinely talk about comprehensive plan updates, we routinely talk about code updates, but they also have to be necessary. So that's a little bit tougher to prove. So that's why we haven't had any Planning Commission meetings so far. And I don't know if any of the Planning Commission meeting and the Planning Commissioners have attended any of the virtual city council meetings. Those also have been very restricted in what they are doing at those meetings. They're mostly paying the bills and they're talking about things. One of the other things you can talk about at a public meeting done virtually is make decisions on anything related to COVID-19 response. So that, that's one of the things that they'll talk about and they'll also talk about things that are necessary. So, you know, contracts, projects that have a time sensitivity that they need to discuss and make decisions on, they have the ability to do that. But the long and short of it is it's up to our city attorney to, to guide what we can and can't discuss and what we can and can't make decisions about at a public meeting like this. So it's very case by case basis. And she gave us the go ahead to get together and kind of check in on what's, you know, what's on the Planning Commission agenda coming up, but we're not going to get into a whole lot of detail about the projects. In fact, we didn't, as part of the packet that you got today, you didn't even get the, the project applications. As much as I just gave you an overview of, there are two zoning requests. And the, you know, the Planning Commission is going to be having public hearings on those. We can't hold public hearings right now. Cause we can't provide the accessibility. So just wanted to kind of get you familiar with the proposals, the locations, get you thinking about it. Show the applicants that we are in fact doing whatever we can to move forward, even though we're, we're kind of, our hands are tied in what, in how much we can do. And it just seemed like it'd be a good idea to get the Planning Commission together and we could discuss any of the issues that you might be concerned about or have questions about, but keep in mind we're not making any decisions. We can't have any in-depth discussion of anything in order to stay, stay legal under the Open Public Meetings Act requirements. So what I've done is I, you may have noticed in the agenda that it's changed to have Planning Commission discussion items up first. So this is, if you have any questions about the COVID closure and how that affects the Planning Commission and, and future projects, now would be a good time to address those. I could, I can tell you is, you know, the government being reopened is part of Phase Three of the Governor's phasing plan. There's been no timeline specifically for when government's going to reopen. And there hasn't been guidance about what that actually means. Presumably when government reopens, we'll be allowed to have public meetings again while following social distancing requirements. Which means we can have, you know, hopefully we'll be able to have people at the city council chambers and participate in a meeting while it's likely that we'll still give the opportunity for the Planning Commission members to participate remotely. Are we bothering you, Joe?
No, damn likely. My phone came out. I won't answer it.
You could have just said it was an alarm during your Planning Commission meeting, so you didn't forget.
Well, I set it on the iPad. I was all set.
All right, so, so we don't know when we're going to be able to have public meetings again. Phase Two is in theory, we, we understand possibly May 31st. And we're getting guidance trickling out as to what's going to be allowed in Phase Two, and that's full construction under COVID requirements, social distancing, sanitary requirements, posting, you know, information about what, you know, how to proceed during the COVID timelines. Giving people their six feet. So those requirements are, are pretty clear for how Phase Two is going to come out. We don't know what the guidance for Phase Three is going to be, so we don't know how that's going to affect our public meetings. If, if everything goes at least three weeks in between, as the Governor has stated, then there's, the timeline would be to have Phase Two open May 31st and then three weeks later, so that'd be June 20th or so. Then we, then we might see Phase Three happening. And Catherine, there's background noise on yours again.
What? The phone really doesn't like the computer. Sorry.
And so hopefully by late June, we'll be able to have public meetings again, but we don't know exactly how that's going to look. And we don't know if that's going to be before the next Planning Commission meeting scheduled date, which I believe is the 16th of June. Yeah, so it'd be early. So the next Planning Commission meeting may not be held in public again, so I would anticipate that that, the next Planning Commission would likely be a remote meeting like, like we're having now. So if you have any questions about how that, where we are, where we're going, that would be a good time to ask those questions. Tried to answer as many as I can there in my little dialogue. Go ahead, Joe.
So this was a question I had for John last week. I just sent an email. And I was wondering if we can get an update of, has there been any impact to existing projects underway? And I realized that, you know, we can't do anything about the virus. And it sounds like what we put in place from a code standpoint is working and there's no changes. But what, what impacts, if any, have you seen to existing business that was either underway, proposed, activity for permits at the counter? How are we being impacted overall from a planning sense as a community?
So as far as businesses being affected, I would, I would recommend that you have attend a city council meeting because the Mary usually gives updates on how it's affecting the local businesses. So that's something that I don't have a whole lot of perspective on in the Planning Department.
Not on the local businesses. More on development apps that we have in the pipeline, projects that are underway. I mean, builders were impacted by the stay home, stay, stay. Only three weeks ago, they were allowed to social distance.
So all construction, all construction was shut down except for the, on March 23rd, all construction was shut down. And they were allowed to finish up with anything to keep it from spoilation is the term that was used in the document. So, you know, if they had the, the roof paper down, the, but not the roofing, you know, they could get the roofing in. If they've got trusses set on top of the building, you know, they gotta, they gotta get those trusses in place and, and covered up and structurally safe, those kinds of things. And then they, then they all finished up and then shortly after they all finished that up, then they came out with clarification to allow the Phase One opening, which allowed any construction projects that had been permitted or, and/or started construction by March 23rd to continue construction as long as they're following the, the state guidelines, which are to maintain social distancing, to, they have to have masks and gloves, they have to have a posting on site saying about worker safety and what the company is doing to protect worker safety during the COVID requirements. And they were basically able to, contractors are basically able to copy and paste a lot of information from the government, from the Governor's memo on, on that. And so they've been going, I forget the date already, for probably two or three weeks. Already starting construct, restarting construction on existing projects. Same kind of goes for public works projects, anything that was already rolling could keep going. And then Phase Two, when it gets kicked off, will allow all construction. And we're anticipating that to be May 31st, but we don't actually know. Then all, any permits that were issued since then, any permits that are issued after that date, you know, all construction be allowed under the cleanliness guidelines and basically the same guidelines from Phase One.
Did we extend any dates due to the fact that certain aspects of a permit might be impossible to complete? In essence, a force majeure style event, that even though it's specified, the applicant would have no ability to complete it because for some reason they need to get to the counter, they need to actually have personal time with you or other staff. Have we thought about that or it just hasn't?
What we've done, what we're working on is, is an ordinance to extend timelines just to, you know, any projects that, you know, the permit might be expiring soon. We don't see a lot of that. Most, most contractors, you know, their permits are good for two years for building permits, so it doesn't really affect too many people. But we are working on that.
Right on.
All right, any other questions? Any other questions?
No.
All right. So just one thing that I do have, could you explain a little bit more like it? You know, why we're not compliant with OPMA now, but you know, and come June, there's a possibility that we could have a OPMA compliant meeting, but we're still virtual. I guess I'm a little confused as to what the distinction is and why the distinction. It's, it's mostly ADA accessibility and the ability for the public to participate. So in the OPMA, there's a requirement that there is a physical location for people to attend meetings. There's also requirements that, you know, we provide hearing assistance and visual assistance. Most, mostly that's not necessary, but you know, every once in a while you need to. One of the things about virtual meetings is while most of us, you know, we all have iPad now that was issued by the, by the city. But it's, it's a equity issue. So not everybody has a smartphone, not everybody has access to the internet. Not everybody has a nice iPad that was issued to them by the government. So attending a virtual meeting is, is actually a high bar for a lot of people. So that's, that's the concern, you know, we're not providing an open door place where anybody who doesn't have the financial or technological ability to participate in a meeting like this, they can just show up at the meeting. And until we can provide equitable access to everybody, that's, that's really the issue. There's a lot of nuances to the, the topic, but that's, that's kind of the main ones. Okay. Thank you, John. When you were saying, you know, we're going to continue, it's likely that we'll continue to offer people the option to participate via virtual meeting because, you know, just because the government, just because government opens doesn't mean that people aren't still going to be concerned about exposure to the coronavirus. So people may still want to shelter in place and not have to attend. And that goes for the Planning Commission members too. If you're not comfortable coming to the meeting after we do open the doors again. I think we'll probably still, will be, the idea is to continue to open, have this option using the GoToMeeting. Excellent.
Yes. Yeah, so now you did raise a question. You said go to a city council meeting for more specific details and how do you do that?
Just like, so so I sent all of the Planning Commission meetings, a Planning Commission meeting, members, excuse me, a specific invitation to this meeting, you know, via email. But all of this information is all, you know, the, the meeting connection information is on the Planning Commission webpage under Meetings and it has a meeting link. So you can just click on it there. And you can also participate. So that's for anybody in the general public who, that's what I was checking to see if there's anybody from the general public on our, our list of people attending this meeting. Anybody, this is an open meeting. Anybody can show up. As long as they have the required technology to participate. And one of the, you know, you see like, you're all able to participate via your iPads. Not everybody has an iPad, but most people have a phone. So there is a, there is a, if you go, if you can, if you can get to the website and see that meeting link, there's a phone-in number, so you can just call from your phone and participate. I encourage everybody to use your iPad because it just works a lot better and I like having some eyes on everybody. It just feels more like we're all in the room together, even though we're not.
Thanks, John. That answered my question.
Yes, Joe.
So one question on that. So if the public is, is participating, assuming they have limited access where nobody could interrupt our conversation, where it's just a view only and we don't have people with microphone access or with things like that, is that correct?
Well, we want people to have microphone access. That's, those are, those are part of the requirements of the, the Open Public Meeting is people have to have the ability. Now, as, you know, this is a, a meeting that's run under the Roberts Rule of Order, so it's up to the Chair to make sure that people are speaking in turn. And, you know, technically, we don't have to give the public the opportunity to speak at a public meeting. The, the really, the, Darren Berg would say this all the time. That we have to provide them the opportunity to see what's going on in government. But we don't necessarily have to listen to people. It's really good form for us to have open public comments, which is different than public hearings, you know, but give people the opportunity to speak at a public meeting. And, you know, as you've all been on the Planning Commission long enough, you know, that if we're talking about a topic and it's just a regular meeting and it's not a public hearing, we generally allow people to come up to the mic and, and say, and speak if they have something that they'd like to say, but we don't have to. We just do that because it just makes sense for us to do so. If there was 400 people at every meeting saying, and they all wanted to chime in, eh, you know, then maybe we might use our, our ability to, to shut that down, but we try, we try to let people speak.
So everyone has the same capabilities that we do?
As long as they, like I said, if you're calling on a phone, you can always listen and speak.
Okay, thank you.
So just because I can't see you, I just want to make sure Silas and Joe Frenette, you, neither of you have any questions that you want to bring forward?
Go ahead, Silas.
Oh, I, I'm all good. I, I've, I've got nothing. I actually do need, sorry, I do have one thing.
Okay.
I, I, I wasn't able to download the GoToMeeting app on my iPad because I didn't have a password or something. And I assume I just need to talk to the IT department about that or?
Yeah, you can send Bill an email.
Okay. Yeah.
Sorry about that. All you really need to do is is, at the, at the very bottom of the meeting invite, there's a, there's a link to tell you how to download the app. Silas, I had the same. I had the same problem this morning. It asked me for like my Apple ID or something like that and I emailed Glenn and Bill and the IT department and Bill helped me. He went in and entered the admin password and, and got me all hooked up. So if you just want to give them a quick email and run over there, they should be able to help you.
That's great. I'll do that.
Do you need their email information?
You know, there was an email from Bill, I guess, saying to contact him and there's some contact info there, I think.
Okay.
For this issue. I just didn't look at it on my iPad until today and anyway, but it's fine.
Okay, yeah, we'll get you taken care of. Commissioner Frenette, do you have any questions that you want to ask?
Yeah. Silas, how, how are you joined in here with a phone or what?
I'm just on my laptop. I, I always just view the Planning Commission materials just from the city website because it's easier for me to do it on my laptop than on my iPad. And so I just followed the link from there after I couldn't get in on the iPad. I tried to get on the GoToMeeting on the iPad, but I, I just.
Are you talking on the telephone or on your computer?
On my computer.
Okay, because John mentioned you can phone, but I tried that phone-in thing using that phone number and they wanted a phone password. So there's another password we need to figure out.
You just, you just press pound and it goes away.
Oh, okay.
You're better off on the iPad anyway.
Okay.
So this is, these are all important questions and comments about the technical aspect of this. That's one of the things we wanted to address today during this portion of the meeting, so we can make sure that everybody's good to go. So don't be afraid to ask technical questions now. Pat?
So am I the only person here that has everybody jumping around on the screens? I was curious whether it's my computer or if everybody else is having the problem of everybody kind of jumping around on the screen.
I only see six people and I don't know where the other six are.
Well, I can see, one, two, three, four, five, six, I can see 10 people that they're all jumping around on the screen like all over the place.
Are you on a laptop?
No, I'm on, I'm on my, my Apple desktop computer. And it was working fine at the beginning. It just started, like maybe halfway through that it started doing that. So I was curious whether it was my machine or, or, or everybody. Sounds like it's my, my problem.
Well, as people jump on and off the meeting, you know, so people get dropped and try to come back on, that kind of moves them around.
So. This is, this is continuous. I mean, it just, it hasn't, yeah, it started and hasn't stopped. Everybody's just changing position every half a second or two.
Must be a good note of that. So a, since we're on the topic of technical questions, I've, I've done a lot of Zoom meetings. This is my first GoToMeeting. And is there a way to see everybody? I, I don't want to tinker with it right now in the middle of a meeting and get knocked out or something, but I only see six people myself. And I didn't know if there was a way to see like all 10 or 11 who are on. I, I don't think so, but I can look into it. I've only ever seen, I've never seen more than six. Okay. And our IT department is looking at possibly doing a different sort of, of service that's more powerful. Might go to a Zoom meeting, Zoom platform, and then I guess we'll have to learn this over again.
I, I've been doing Zoom meetings through the school and they're, they're awesome. And you can get like, we have like 171 people in a meeting and it does change one screen at a time whenever somebody talks that moves over, but it's been really, really good. Way to do meetings.
There's several different platforms. So we're using GoToMeeting, which is really meant to be kind of a smaller group. There's also, by the same age, same company that makes GoToMeeting is GoToWebinar. And that has a function where you can have thousands of people participating. It allows the, allows people to be muted from the, from Bill, the organizer can mute everybody, turn everybody's on and off. There's a raise your hand function on it. You press a button and you raise a hand. So this is just kind of a lesser, less powerful platform and we're looking at more. Okay.
Bill, go ahead for, go ahead.
So this is, this is Bill Chambers. And I'm going to go ahead and share my webcam. So now you see. So now you see me added to the, the window there, right? So.
I don't see you.
What, what you can, what you can do also is up on the, if you press on the little camera icon at the top, you see an option to view webcams all talking or talking.
Yeah.
If you want, you can press the one for talking and then you just see the person who's talking.
Oh, cool.
So anyone who talks, um, should pop up on your screen.
Do a little emoji, Bill.
Mr. Huggins, are your, are the, the, the pictures of people, are they bouncing around still?
No, it just stopped, uh, about, just before Bill came on, it, it stopped.
Um, but I did want to let you know, I am looking at, uh, um, uh, there are two different, uh, webinar, um, options. One from, from GoToMeeting, GoToWebinar and, uh, Zoom Webinar. And, uh, I'm kind of comparing the pros and cons of each of those. There are some good things about Zoom, but there are some, some good things about, um, the, uh, uh, recording, uh, ability of, of, uh, GoToWebinar. So I'll keep you all posted on how that goes.
Perfect. Thank you, Bill.
All right, I'm going to mute myself.
Bill, can you tell who's that feedback's coming from? Is that Catherine again?
I'm going to mute myself.
Well, that's pretty clear. It was Catherine.
It's kind of like a squawking feedback. Sorry about that, Catherine.
Yeah, um, Catherine, are you on a, um, microphone or, uh, um, are you just on, on your smartphone?
So I thought it might be my phone, so I switched to the iPad, but it seems to still have that problem.
Yeah.
No, I'll just stay on mute until I need to say something.
I, I don't hear it now.
I moved myself farther away from the laptop, but it's odd that, that would be it, so.
Okay, okay. Um, are there any other questions for me before I, uh, get back to washing my dishes?
Silas has a question.
Okay, go ahead, Silas.
Well, I just wanted to put in a couple of technical. I, I use this GoToMeeting for a, a board that I sit on. We have board meetings on it. And if everybody keeps their microphones muted, unless you have some sort of a headset thing, but if there's any feedback, it just kills the whole thing.
Yeah, yeah.
We've recently switched to Zoom and we do like, uh, weekly presentations. And it's really handy because you can, uh, it, it seems like the Zoom functionality is much better than the, this GoToMeeting for sort of, because you can have a meeting like this where there's presenters or, or, you know, or, or people. And then everybody else can watch and comment if they need to through the chat box or whatever. But, um, but that's been good for us. And, and we've since moved our board meetings to Zoom as well. And it, it seems to be quite a bit smoother, so.
Yeah, and they, they fixed the problem they had with people breaking into meetings. Um, okay, well, uh, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll keep, uh, you all posted through, John, and, um, I'll let you get on with your meeting.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions that anybody has, technical COVID or otherwise? Any other thoughts that you want to share, John, or?
No, I said enough.
You said enough? All right. So that being the case, has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from February? It's been a while.
Yes.
Any corrections, additions, changes? If not, I will entertain a motion to accept. Go ahead.
So I, I had one, um, comment. I just wasn't sure, let me get to it here. When it's discussing the model home ordinance under the public hearing, uh, that third paragraph there, uh, the second sentence, "The commission discussed not allowing manufactured homes being allowed as model homes." That was just kind of confusing to me. And then the following sentence, "Without the commission approved the model home ordinance with the exception of allowing manufactured homes to be constructed as model homes." So is it saying we said no or we said yes because it is kind of vague?
So, you want, you want a rewording of the question?
I took it as saying no.
Okay.
This is Michelle. I took it as saying no.
Okay.
I can reword that.
If everybody else thinks it's clear, it's fine. I just, uh, it was a little confusing.
Is there anybody else that took exception to the wording of that?
I was fine with it myself.
It's close to a double negative, so we should actually, the motions are supposed to be in the positive and not, um, stating a negative. So, uh, well, I'll, I'll take a look at that.
Okay.
So do we make a motion to approve or not approve at this point, if you're going to change it?
I apologize. I don't have the minutes up in front of me. I'm working on it.
And I don't have them in front of me either.
Casey, I can hear the birds in your background.
Sorry.
It's okay. It's okay.
So could, instead, could we say something to the effect of, uh, "The planning commission approved the model home ordinance allowing, uh, well, the model home ordinance and excluded manufactured homes to be constructed as model homes?"
Um, in order to, uh, how about, um, "Planning commission approved the model home ordinance with the, yeah, I don't, yeah, with the exception is kind of confusing." "Approve the model."
"Model homes shall not be manufactured homes."
Preclusion of manufactured homes?
Can I make a motion that we approve the minutes, uh, with this one change in mind and work out the exact wording later?
I, I've, I've, I've got it. So, uh, "With that, the planning commission approved the model home ordinance with the stipulation that manufactured homes may not be used as model homes."
I like that.
Perfect. Used or constructed?
You don't construct a model, you don't construct manufactured homes.
So with that change, are there any?
It's manufactured homes. So manufactured homes, like, they can come in in pieces that you do construct them. Then you got your single wides, double wides, you still have to put them together.
I've got two keypad's in front of me and I keep wondering why it's not working when I'm typing on one of them. So, uh, well, let's put this out there. Uh, let's put this language out there and see, uh, what the planning commission thinks. "Without the planning commission approved the model home ordinance with the stipulation that manufactured homes may not be used as model homes."
I'll go with that.
I'm good with that. If there's no objections and/or additional changes, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I saw move.
I second.
All right, so it's been moved by Commissioner Feiberg and seconded by Commissioner Fatizzi. February 18, 2020 minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. And there's no public comment today, given we're technically not, not under OPMA and we're going virtual. So that brings us to new business with the two rezone requests. 2020 TAC 010 and 2020 TAC 012. Now, John, with the, just trying to wrap my mind around this. So with, with today's, uh, discussion of the new business, is it just kind of a organized talk amongst ourselves about these particulars? Or are you wanting to go into actual detail about them?
I'm just going to more or less give a quick review of what's going on. So in case there's any questions about what I wrote. And, um, then if you've got any questions about where specifically they are or kind of basic stuff, then we can, we can talk about that.
Okay.
So, uh, the city council approved two zoning requ- uh, requests as part of the 2020 comprehensive plan docket. So there's one application from, um, from Mr. Quam and his wife. They own property which is off of Pinto Lane. And, uh, it's shown on page two of the memo. Both of the rezones are showed on the map on page two. So theirs is in the south western part of the city. It's a little triangle lot that is tucked south of the, uh, south of the railroad, south of Highway 20, uh, pinned in to the, uh, just north of Hart Slough. And then he owns the residential lot just east of it. And that's where his, where his home is. And then, so this triangle lot is kind of isolated. So that's the, the general discussion of what, what it is. The, the size is shown on here. It's only accesses from Pinto Lane, which is just a gravel driveway basically to the existing house. There's nothing been used on, the property's never been used, the, um, the property that's being requested to be changed is not, not been used for anything besides hay field, I think. Uh, the, the property owner described it as, um, unused. What would you say, unused hay field? Yeah, unused pasture land. So, um, there's no existing uses, there's no access. Uh, it is, Hart Slough is a, is part of the shoreline master program. So, um, any use within 200 feet of that needs to get a shoreline master program permit and on top of any building permits or other land use permits. There is a 200-foot buffer from that slough. It's a, uh, you know, that's a, the largest type of stream corridor, river corridor. So it has the largest buffer, which is 200 feet. So nothing can be built within 200 feet of it for all intents and purposes without getting some sort of variances for critical areas variances. So it's, it's not, I think his argument is, and you'll see in the future, uh, that there's just not a lot of use for it. And he doesn't really want to have industrial next to him, so. That's long and short of that.
Commissioner Fatizzi?
So this is the first silly question. How did that even end up industrial in the first place when I look at the overall city map? I mean, it's such an outlier. And secondly, and I don't think it's a big deal, but you've always discussed the, uh, impact of removing certain industrial classifications from an overall, uh, ratio that were required to keep via Skagit County. So I, I know it's two acres of why it was even industrial is, is a question to me.
So I can address that. So the second part of your question, I'm going to leave to a date when we can have a more in-depth discussion.
Okay.
Um, I'm just going to make a call on that. The, the first half was, the whole area used to be industrial, including across the street. Back in, uh, across Highway 20, it used to be industrial. And, um, there was the, that, that, um, the, the property across the street was rezoned to commercial back in 2008 or '09. And, uh, this property just remained industrial.
It's across the street.
You know how Oklahoma has the panhandle? We have the tail. That's the Seidro Woolley tail section. Sorry, a little humor, break up the virtual. I'm done.
That was color too.
That was me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Michelle, okay, I had to call in because my internet was giving out and I was missing most of it. So I'm on the phone now.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
It's all right.
So the other application is for a portion of the golf course. The golf course has been what we refer to as a split zone for as long as I've been here and I've been here since 2006. So I only have conjecture as to why it is the way it is zoned. It's, um, so the area that is zoned mixed commercial is the clubhouse area. It's, and it's, uh, defined as the area east of the creek, which is an unnamed creek section, but is a fish-bearing creek. And north of the big, the big gas line going diagonally towards the northwest across that property. So north of that pipeline and east of the creek is all an area that was defined as mixed commercial. I'm, I, I think the obvious answer is somewhere along the line, the city felt that that would be a good node for a, um, like a convenience store or something along those lines for the Sauk Mountain View Estates, uh, properties. I see Commissioner Huggins nodding his head. He was probably, possibly around in those days?
Oh, yeah, that, um, yeah, I think Geraldine was on, uh, your, at your position at that point. And she was, um, they were trying to make us, instead of being a concentric ring city, into more of a satellite city. And so we were looking at locations where you could put, um, mixed commercial not in the downtown area. And that was one place that, um, we picked that where you, where you, was reasonable that you might put it, like, exactly like you said, a convenience store or something like that.
And this planning commission voted to do something like that, um, similarly on Highway 9 up at Bassett Road. Yeah. Uh, as a recent zoning discussion, so. Now, the, the three acres that is zoned mixed commercial is a part of a much larger parcel of a piece of land that, uh, so half, part of the three acres of that parcel is mixed commercial. And then the rest of, I think it's 23 acres are zoned R5, residential 5. So it's a bit of an oddity, but it, it, it's not unusual or wrong. But the property owner, it would like to redevelop the property, uh, all of the golf course, including this area as residential. He, he doesn't want to do anything mixed commercial. So, uh, he's requesting to rezone the, this part from, uh, mixed commercial to R5.
Yes, Pat?
So I, I know we can't talk about it. So I, I know we can't talk about it tonight, but, um, I, I have two things that I, I'd like maybe John to, to look into, or I could hopefully find a few minutes to, to look into it, but, um, uh, there's, there's a lot of history here that needs to be clarified before anything happens down there, and I'm not saying I'm for or against it, but one thing was that when, uh, they were pla- uh, doing the planning for Sock Mountain, they referred constantly to the fact that the golf course was open space, and that, with that open space would offset the, the smallness of their lots, and this was before the PRD was made and before the PRD was shut down because lots were too small. But my question is, is, um, uh, the first question is, is if you, um, if they use the, the golf course as offsetting open space, can it actually be developed at all, um, if they don't have the golf course on it? And the other question that, um, I wanted to look into is that, I've heard numerous times, and I believe in the meetings when Sock Mountain was being planned, that the golf course was originally a, um, uh, conditional use of a wetland, and I've never heard anything definitive about that, but I'd like to know, you know, before we make a decision, if it's a, if it's a conditional use of a wetland and it's no longer a golf course, then it should revert back to, um, to wetland and not, um, and, and not residential. So those are two things I need to, think need to be cleared up before we can even look at, um, look at his, his thing. So anyway, I'll just leave it there because I know we can't discuss stuff with, outside of, outside of the public, so.
Yeah, and that's as part of my, uh, my work that I'll bring to you, is the history of the site and, um, specifically those things, because I've heard those things in the past as well, so, um, I'd like to look into them. I've, I've done a lot of digging in it. It's hard to tell if, um, that was actually a requirement, but, well, I'll, I'll fill you in on the details when, when we get to that part of it.
I was gonna just say, one last thing is that, um, you know, they didn't, well, I, I think they were recording minutes back then, but, um, but if you would listen to the tapes or look back at the minutes of, um, the meetings when Sock Mountain was being , uh, platted and they were coming up with the, the concept for it, that, you'll, you'll hear, you'll hear the discussion about the, um, the golf course probably in every second or third sentence, the, because that was the main way they, they were able to rationalize that they were making the lot so small, so it, that part of it will be in the, the public record numerous times, two, probably two or three hundred times.
So was the, was the planning commission, the board, did the planning commission approve, uh, review and approve the subdivision, in your recollection? Because right now, you know, planning commission doesn't review subdivisions, but they used to. You're muted.
Sorry, sorry. Um, that was right when I started on the planning commission, so I was kind of sitting in on meetings at that point to hear what it was, and I can't remember if that happened at the planning commission level or the city council level. Um, I know that I, I was there when the city council was, uh, you know, discussing whether to allow it and, and everything, but I don't, uh, I can't say for sure whether it went through the planning commission, but I'd assume that it did.
Okay.
Hey, Pat, uh, what year was that, just out of curiosity, um, just in case?
I'll get, I'll get all those details for you.
The year I started was 2001, that's when I got put on, so it was the year 2000, 2001, somewhere in there.
Any other comments or stuff you want to raise for next meeting on one of these? Commissioner Frenette, Commissioner Penno, since I can't see you, I just wanted to make sure that you guys had ample opportunity. Do either one of you have any questions or comments?
No, sir, thank you.
I'm fine.
Was that Joe?
Yeah, I'm here, and thanks for the question. Um, I think, um, I'll wait until we take a look at these properties and talk in person.
All right. However, I was, I was anticipating this to be a quick meeting, but, once we get the hang of this, we can get a little quicker, maybe.
All right. Well, if there's no other questions or comments, I am willing to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All right, been moved by Commissioner Fatizzi and seconded by Commissioner Penno to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we are adjourned at, uh, 7:33.